Sources, policies, programs aligned with our district goals, assessing and providing accountability for student achievement, and supporting a healthy school district culture in which to work and learn. So I just want everyone to know that the time and effort that you dedicate to our school community does not go unnoticed. So, thank you very much for all that you do.
And thank you. And thank you to those who are involved. I see we have some
Some updated tumblers?
Yes.
With the new logo?
Very nice. Thank you to all of those who were involved in putting together this recognition. Our student government reports.
Good evening, everyone, and happy homecoming week. Monday night's Powderpuff game was a success with a surprise ending as the senior girls battled to a 7-7 tie. The winner will be determined tomorrow afternoon at our pep rally. Thank you to Mr. Robinson, Mr. Peroni, Mr. Bevel, and Mr. Traz for coaching.
Spirit week is in full swing as we celebrated America Monday, Tacky Tourists Tuesday, and Color Wars, and tomorrow we expect to see if purple and yellow throughout the district. Please join us Friday night beginning at 5:00 for our annual street fair where we'll have 25 groups joining us. There'll be plenty of food, music, and games. If the weather does not cooperate, we will be holding the fair in the high school cafeteria and gym. The week will conclude with the football game and our homecoming dance.
In other news, our sports teams are gearing up for sectionals, and our golf team recently won the Section 2 championship. In addition, Scotty's Closet is accepting donations for their event on November 4th. And lastly, in just a few weeks, our true production of The Play That Goes Wrong will take place along with our annual Thanksgiving food drive. Thank you, and we hope to see you and celebrate our Scotty community this weekend.
Thank you for that. And what are the details on the pep rally? Where, when?
Tomorrow at 12:15, our high school students will be called down into our gym, and we have a full list of events from relay races to Hungry Hippo to pie eating. We're really looking forward to this event tomorrow.
And it's the entire school?
Entire school.
Awesome. And I remember seeing some video of the Hungry Hippo contest, and that's quite the event.
We can't wait.
Hopefully, we can get some highlights published on the district website for all to enjoy. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for our student government representation? And if you would like to excuse yourselves, please do so. Thank you very much. And it's our first time for public comment. We do have some people signed up for public comment. As always, I will read our guidance for public comment. Board of Education welcomes district residents, parents, and other interested persons to its meeting. Community involvement at the board meetings is encouraged so that the board can better understand and represent the views of its constituents. Please be aware, however, that information such as individual student information or particular personnel issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. Speakers will be called upon individually. When recognized by the board president, will be asked to approach the podium, state your name and residence. Statements are restricted to a maximum of two minutes. Speakers will be notified by the board president when his or her time has expired. And I will just ask, please, for you to conclude your comments. The board and the district staff take public comment very seriously. However, the board will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period. The board asks the public's cooperation in maintaining a safe and respectful environment, and the board president reserves the right to limit individual comments if it is deemed necessary. To achieve this, speakers will please not make slanderous attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the district, a member of the audience, or a member of the public. Please do not use profane, vulgar, threatening, or disparaging language, or racial or ethnic slurs. Please do not disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts or other disruptive conduct or behavior either during the speaker's assigned time or at any other time during the meeting. Speakers understand that a failure to comply with these rules for maintaining a respectful and productive environment may result in early termination of the speaker's allotted time, a denial of future requests to speak, and any other actions deemed necessary by the president of the board, or where appropriate in the matter of health and safety measures, the superintendent of schools. So I will ask people to please approach the podium. Please address your comments to the board as a whole and not to any particular individual of the board or the administration. So, first speaker, Mr. Slaggenhoop?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak. I come here tonight to talk about checks and balances. Checks and balances are important in government along with local and state government, especially with school. For five long years, I've been fighting for the injustice. And the injustices has happened to my son and the subsequent educational deficits that he's had to encounter because of his lack of attendance to school from another party. It's been a very long road for my son. He's a person with autism, and he'll speak in a few minutes after I'm done, that for him, it's been a very long, difficult journey. He came to be with me in May of this last year and has been successful since. I have a very proud son who's 17 going on 18, who changed his life completely around. He was a person that was morbidly obese, almost type 2 diabetes, on four different medications, and he's lost 72 pounds with his lifestyle change, and it's reflecting with his schoolwork and how he's successful now. With this change, to focus on him, I know two minutes isn't long enough to speak on the tragedy of kids getting lost in the system of injustice, but hopefully somebody in here, we can reach out to us and provide hope for other kids to be able to have checks and balances, to put other kids that are at risk at a better advantage of life. So us being their advocates, we can fight for them in turning their hopes and dreams into what they should be and not the reality of a mind where they have to struggle and have to worry about struggling to survive each day and continue that struggle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Christian Slaggenhoop?
So just to start this off with, I didn't go ahead and write a whole speech like my father has done, because I know that wouldn't have the flotsam or whatever other fancy word you want to say to get the point across. So I just took down some notes from my personal years of going through school to hammer this point in. One of the main majorities that I've noticed and written down is that in 7th grade, because of being under the care of my mother, if you can use the word "care" as well to describe that, I missed about 149 days in a school year. And counting all of the grades where I've had long streaks of being absent, I have missed about 383 days. That's over a year. And to be honest with you, and this may be a bit degrading to myself, but honestly, I struggled and still do struggle because I didn't have the opportunity or the long-term ability to adapt and learn these things. Because of those long stretches of being absent, whether it be long stretches or just short moments, I never had the opportunity to learn and adapt, both with the knowledge that's taught by the school's curriculum as well as personal and social abilities. And as my father said himself, obviously, two minutes isn't enough time to go into detail about this, but I just want it to be known that there are people out there who are in situations that aren't healthy or good or positive as it may be portrayed on the outside. And so I hope to even the people that may be watching now to try and speak out and to make it aware of whatever situation you're in, so you can live better.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Marissa Lester. I reside at 58 Skylark Drive. I'm the owner and operator of Saratoga Functional Nutrition. I'm also a CPA, and I teach accounting at the University at Albany. But first and foremost, I am a mother of two children that go to Milton Terrace Elementary. I am a proud parent of the Boston Spa School District and think that our schools are providing an exceptional education experience. Between the curriculum, our talented teachers and support staff, and the social-emotional learning units, our children are being set up for success. To start, I would like to begin by acknowledging and my appreciation for the work that the Board of Education's Health and Wellness Committee has done to create an approved food list for the district. It has created a lot of flexibility, a lot more room for celebration in the classroom, and it's very much appreciated by parents and students. In reviewing the list of approved foods, I would like to propose some adjustments to ensure that our children are consuming higher-quality products that promote good health and mental well-being. There are numerous scientific studies on the effects of excess added sugar, food dyes, and other additives that negatively affect children's behavior, ability to concentrate, and overall mood. In my professional opinion, the approved food list could be tweaked to reduce these ill effects on our children throughout the year, as well as support our educators, whose job it is to manage those behaviors in the classroom. If you start to think about the number of students in a classroom, all of the celebrations that we have throughout the year between birthdays and holidays, it's a lot of processed food that we're giving our children. While this may seem like a small request, I do think that the effects could be large. Considering that 18 grams of sugar suppresses the immune system for up to five hours, that is the equivalent of two Rice Krispie Treats, which is one of the foods on the approved list, we need to think in terms of attendance rates, child behavior in the classroom, how we want our children to feel when they're at school. We want them to feel good, which we need to think about blood sugar spikes and things like that. And I know when my children have a party at school, I can tell as soon as they get off the school bus. Another food listed on the approved list is Cool Whip. It's comprised of corn syrup and other chemical constituents, and it also does not fall under the USDA's categories of smart snacks. I know that one of the Health and Wellness Committee's goals was to improve the vending machine quality of foods and by only going by the USDA's Smart Snack List. Currently, as the approved food list stands, there are eight foods that do not fall under their 10-page listing of smart snacks. So I think that that is definitely something to consider. And I don't think that it reflects the standards that are in alignment with the Health and Wellness Committee's goals for our children's health and wellness. I hope that you will take the time to reflect on the alignment of the approved foods list with the goals of the district overall, as well as the goals of the Health and Wellness Committee. Thank you so much for your attention. I appreciate the opportunity to share my viewpoint as a parent educator and a holistic health practitioner. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Dubuque?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Chris Dubuque, Kaling Drive, Boston Spa. It pains me to unfortunately be here tonight on an issue that has impacted our family and our community in recent days and recent weeks, and I feel the need to speak on it based on something that occurred recently in the school. And I'm asking you as a board and the administration here, I have a bit of a concern for the safety of my two boys that are still in this school district. My one young son came home the other day and had learned in class, and I'll bring this directly to the teacher's attention as well, but he's a little bit concerned with what's going on. And he was speaking in class on recent events, and sort of a few things were brought up to his attention by the teacher that Israel was perpetrating war crimes and that the atrocities that happened on October 7th, I'll put that out there again, the atrocities that happened on October 7th were based on land, in a land dispute. So naturally, you can imagine our distress. We have a lot of good friends in Israel, and we have a lot of good Israeli friends living here in the U.S. So I'm asking this board, what is going to be done to ensure the safety of my two boys? And we saw what happened in Shem with the three children down there that took the Israeli flag out of the backpack of another student, flushed it in the toilet and filmed it. But I'm also concerned what's going to happen with teachers that are, again, I understand people want to have an opinion in this, but if it's an ill-informed opinion, and again, I do believe this was an ill-informed opinion, it's probably best not to speak in class. Because again, I want my children to feel safe and protected, that they can come into the school, express their Jewishness, be proud to do so, and not come under any disparaging remarks, comments, or views from their peers or from people they look up to. My son did not want me coming here speaking. He's afraid now that this teacher that he looks up to personally and really is a role model to him in many ways, and he is a good teacher from what I've had reported to me and I've met him personally. But now my son's worried that it's going to ruin his relationship with the teacher. But again, this is distressing when I'm having these discussions and having to bring it to my son's attention that this was definitely misinformation. And again, I just want this school to be aware of. That's one thing that was reported to me. I don't think it's prevalent throughout the school, but one is enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That concludes our first public comment period. Next up, approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting on October 4th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have Dr. Dana Sisk, who is going to be presenting her findings and recommendations on the multi-tiered systems of support audit that we conducted over the summer. So Dana spent the better parts of July and August doing an honest audit of where we're at, at the district level, across our buildings with our MTSS program. And so she has put together a report, and we'll be talking about that tonight and making some recommendations that we will be considering as we move forward with the district goals. Thanks, Dana.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me this evening. First, I would like to say that I was very excited to have the opportunity to conduct this audit. The better part of two years I spent working on my doctoral dissertation focused on the multi-tiered system of support. So when the opportunity was presented to me, I was very, very excited to have that chance. So thank you very much for that. So the MTSS, what I'll talk about in the presentation is a little bit of background about MTSS, the procedures that I used for the audit, and then the recommendations, which will also comprise some of the findings that I found from the audit. So the multi-tiered system of support is a tiered intervention-prevention model used to align behavioral, academic, social, emotional, and mental health supports so that we can support the whole child and increase the success of our students. The framework is based around evidence-based practices, database decision-making, problem-solving, and really is applicable to all of our students. Struggling students, students that receive special education services, students in the general education classroom, it doesn't matter, these interventions and supports can be applicable across the board. In addition, I just wanted to mention that the MTSS framework has been more recently adopted and looked at by the federal government, the United States Department of Education, as well as the New York State Department of Education. The federal government has built grants and funding and specific definitions of MTSS into the Every Student Succeeds Act, and the New York State Department of Education has indicated MTSS as part of their ESSA plan, but more recently, has developed a pilot framework for MTSSI, which is Multi-Tierred System of Support Integrated, where they are currently piloting this framework throughout 29 school districts in the state, which was very exciting to me because I was working on my dissertation the same time this was happening, and I had no idea. So I was very excited about that. So the audit overview itself, as Dr. Duka said, we want to take an honest look at the current state of implementation of the multi-tiered system of support at the district and building level, and systematically look at our policies, practice, and procedures. What this audit was geared to do was allow us to be able to identify our needs, any gaps in implementation, what barriers are existing so that that get in the way of us implementing with fidelity, and then goals to be developed to move forward. Our objective was to ensure that we're implementing MTSS to serve the whole child with a focus on equity, inclusivity, and access for all students with a shared ownership and collaboration of stakeholders. And when we develop the objective, it really speaks to not just our district goal of focusing on the multi-tiered systems of support, but also increasing student achievement, diversity, equity, and inclusion. It really encompasses a lot of the different goals and initiatives that we're working on as a whole. The MTSS process, the audit, had two components to it. As Dr. Duka said, it was conducted in July and August. The first part was the internal audit. I looked at our internal documentation, did a review and analysis. Thank you to all the building administrators that took their time over the summer to meet with me so that I could conduct interviews. And then District and Building Administration completed an MTS readiness screener, as well as an MTSS startup assessment to really determine where we are in the implementation process. The second piece of the audit was a review of external resources, and this is really important because it provides timely and relevant information that allows for critical analysis and evaluation. I took the external resources and aligned it to what I found through the internal audit, and that's how I came up with some of the recommendations to align with the external resources, especially with the MTSSI pilot framework that's been implemented by the State Education Department. So I have 11 total recommendations. In each recommendation, I did include some of the findings, just to paint a picture of where we are currently. Those findings came from the internal audit as well as external evaluation of resources. So the first recommendation that I have is to take a look at Board of Ed Policy 7212. And this policy does specifically address MTSS, but it has more of a response-to-intervention academic focus. In addition, the policy itself makes a note that RTI should be implemented for students in grades kindergarten through 4th grade that could potentially be, that could have a potential disability in reading. So it's very focused on elementary, it's very focused on academic, and it does refer to the multi-tiered systems of support and the processes and procedures, but we don't really have processes and procedures for MTSS. So then the question becomes, what is MTSS? How is it filling in some of the gaps, and what are the practices and procedures that we have? So the recommended changes, establish MTSS as the predominant intervention framework, apply it for K-12 so that it's implemented across all buildings, address academic, behavioral, social, emotional, and mental health. This is that MTSSI integrated, so we're taking all these components and integrating them. One of the biggest things that I found too was, you know, sometimes we can be providing interventions for academics when the academics may not actually be the challenge. The challenge could be social, emotional, it could be mental health. So where is it appropriate for us to put our resources to help the child? If we identify it's mental health, if we identify it's social, emotional, and we're able to provide interventions and supports to help in that area, then the academics will come along. So it's also making sure that we're putting the supports in the right place. And then the policy would be the foundation for serving the whole child. The second recommendation, our current MTSS handbook is 48 pages. 11 of the pages focus on our MTSS processes and procedures, and 37 pages focus on special education. And while MTSS is a process that can be implemented to help support students with special education services, we want to be very careful not to paint a picture that MTS is a pathway to special education. Right now, our MTSS handbook is three-quarters focused on special education, one-quarter focused on MTSS. So the recommendation would be to separate those, so they're separate and distinct documents. That doesn't mean we're not, there's no mention of special education in the MTSS handbook, because that could lead to, if we determine that a student has a disability, but they really should be separate entities. The third recommendation, transferable processes and procedures between elementary and secondary. I noted that the current policy focuses predominantly on K through 4. The challenge with that is, you know, we have the policies and procedures in place at the elementary level, but those aren't necessarily transferable once you get to secondary. The organizational structure is different. Children's schedules are different. The classes they're taking, they have a lot more teachers. So being able to transfer that from elementary to secondary can be extremely challenging. It also doesn't differentiate between data cycles and how we're gathering data. The way we gather data and our data cycles at the elementary level are very different than at the secondary level. And there was a book that I read as part of my research. It was written by Clark and Doc Wyler, focused on MTSS in secondary schools. And the research said very clearly that in secondary schools, the processes and procedures have to be very, very clear, concise, and defined, because that's the area where it's easy to lose it, because there's so many moving parts. So the recommended changes clearly define processes and procedures at each level, define the data cycles, and how are we collecting data, who's collecting the data? And this really helps ensure that the framework can be implemented with fidelity, K-12, across every building. The fourth recommendation, the processes and procedures to support students' academic, behavioral, social, emotional, and mental health needs. So currently, our interventions focus predominantly on academics. There is some indication of behavior, but there's not really any differentiation between the nuances of supporting a student that has behavioral needs and supporting a student that has academic needs. We also currently don't have any processes and procedures in place specifically with the tiered levels of intervention to address mental health and social, emotional needs. So the recommended changes would be to specify those processes and procedures so that we can meet the needs of the whole child, identify the interventionists and specialists that will help support. We want to make sure that wherever we're determining these interventions and supports, that the people that are knowledgeable in that area are assisting with that. And then recognize the nuances between addressing all these different areas. The fifth recommendation is to align our MTSS handbook with NICE Ed's MTSSI playbook. They provided a document that walked through the steps of the different components of what their MTSS handbook has. I'm recommending aligning it to that so that in the future, we're not entirely sure where state ed's going to go with the pilot. If we're moving towards implementation, we can already have a handbook that's already in line with what they're expecting. So our current handbook, it does have the definition and description. It has screening provisions. It talks about the different teams at the different levels. It provides the toolbox with links to forums. So there is a lot of information in there. But aligning it to NICE Ed's MTSSI playbook will just put us a step ahead, because our handbook will already be in line with what they are piloting in those 29 districts. And then identify team roles and responsibilities, intervention processes, what are our common assessments and universal screening practices, how are we progress monitoring, and how are students moving between the tiers? What are the criteria? It should be very specific how a student is, if a student is receiving a Tier 3 intensive intervention, what do they have to achieve to move down to Tier 2 and move down to Tier 1 and not require those interventions anymore? So we need some clarity there. Defining all the different types of interventions for the four different areas, what is the role of the student and parent in the MTSS process? We really need to have their input and their feedback and their contribution. This is a plan for the student. They should be involved in that whole piece. And then developing a separate handbook for the elementary, middle, and high school. The whole handbook won't be different. There are definitely components that need to be the same, the description of MTSS, what the tiered levels of intervention are. One of the things that I found through the audit pretty much across almost everybody was that we don't have common language. Everybody's using different terms for different things. We're having, we might be having a conversation about the same thing, but everybody's using different terminology. So if we're developing a glossary that has common language, that would be the same in every handbook for every level, but the implementation processes and procedures would vary based on the organizational structures and needs of the schools. Recommendation sticks, a district-level MTSS implementation team. Right now, we have building-level teams. We don't have a comprehensive district-level team. We have people at the district level working. We don't have a comprehensive district-level team, we have people at the district level working on different things, but not anything that's really come together as one team. So the recommendation there would be to establish a district-level MTSS implementation team with responsibilities to develop the implementation plan, update and review the plan annually, continually audit our practices to make sure that we're implementing with fidelity, identify those barriers and how do we overcome them, develop the goals, progress monitoring systems, and then support the building-level teams. The seventh recommendation, our consistent and transferable referral and intervention processes and procedures. What I found to be really interesting when I conducted the audit was I expected there to be variation between elementary, middle, and high school, just because of the nature of the structures. But what I found was that buildings at the same level had different processes and procedures, and even individuals in the same building were following different processes and procedures. So there was a lack of consistency, which poses a challenge for a variety of reasons. Administrators also indicated that the forms were challenging, they're not necessarily comprehensive, easily accessible, can be cumbersome to complete. So we want to streamline all that. So the recommended change is make those processes and procedures clear for all stakeholders. What is the teacher's responsibility, what's the administrator's responsibility? What is the student's responsibility, if they have any, depending on their age? You know, what is the parent's responsibility? So take a look at all these different areas and then streamline forms and data collection procedures. Whether we do that internally or we consider external data management systems, there are some out there that would be, I think, worth taking a look at. But however we do that, as long as it's streamlined so that everybody's following the same processes and procedures for consistency. The eighth recommendation, explicitly define what our tiered interventions are. So we have interventions, we have academic interventions, we do have some behavioral interventions. In fact, we really do have interventions in every area, but we don't have any differentiation, differentiation between tier one, two, and three. How are they implemented, who's implementing them? Our academic interventions are most defined, but we're, we're lacking in the other areas. And one of the things that many of the administrators said is we need to beef up our tier one, and then that'll help with our tier two and tier three. So for the recommended changes, identify those evidence-based interventions and responses that are available in each tier, and create a menu of responses. That doesn't mean that these are the only interventions and supports that we can use, but a lot of times I've heard, I've heard people say, where do I even start? This at least gives a starting point, and then we can have those conversations and build off of that to develop appropriate support plans for students. And then have those interventions in each tier developed by the implementation teams at each level because the way we respond to an elementary, academic, or behavioral, or social, emotional concern will be different than the way we address it at the high school. I also identified recommended, excuse me, oversight of areas of intervention based on areas of expertise. So for the academic component, that would be overseen by the Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction with the support of AIS providers, interventionists, and coaches. Behavioral would be the Director and Assistant Directors of Special Education with the School Psychologists and Licensed Behavior Analysts. And then the Mental Health and Social Emotional would, would be our Director of Student Support Services, along with our School Counselors and Social Workers, all coming together and working together to develop these interventions for our students. Recommendation nine, process for progress monitoring the interventions. This was also something that was very consistent with responses. How are we progress monitoring, we're doing this, the other, this other person is doing this. There wasn't a lot of consistency with how we were progress monitoring, what the tools we're using for progress monitoring. There was a lack of knowledge on effectively and efficiently progress monitoring, and then there's burden put on the teachers to collect the data. So working on that, for the recommended changes, develop that process for progress monitoring. What are our data points that can be used? What are, what are our methods for collecting that data to monitor these different? Because each area is going to have different data that we're going to need to collect. Some of it's going to cross, but some of it's going to be different. How do we use that data for decision-making and problem-solving? And then who's responsible for collecting and reviewing that data? Along with that, recommendation 10 is to develop professional development opportunities surrounding MTSS. So currently, we don't have a professional development plan specifically for MTSS. Workshops have been offered, formal training has been provided to administrators. But as, as administrators, we're not always, we're not the boots-on-the-ground in the classroom every day. We're, the interventionist's working with the students and implementing these things. So the recommended change is to have an MTSS reboot, a complete reset, get back to basics, start from the beginning, and really build the capacity of our, of our staff and our stakeholders so that we can implement this with fidelity. I'm recommending potentially using the November faculty meetings for that reboot to capture all the staff when they're all together. And then develop a plan for professional development. Some of the, there was a lot of areas that the administrators had indicated, but, you know, implementing tier two and tier one interventions, reading and analyzing data, we have all these numbers, what do we do with it? And how do we determine entrance and exit points into the tiers? And then implementing and gathering data for progress monitoring. And then last but not least, like I just mentioned, we can't do this without the folks that are in the classrooms, the interventionists, the specialists, all the people that are implementing these things on a daily basis. So extend the audit to obtain information from additional stakeholders. The scope of the audit over the summer focused specifically on building and district administration. My recommendation would be to obtain feedback from the folks that are in the, in the classrooms, working with the students, day-to-day. I know as an administrator, I, there's many times I see things one way, and then when I talk to the teachers, they see something different. Having the ability to get feedback from them will give us the opportunity to see where do we line up? Where are their gaps? Where do we need to fill? What do teachers need? What are, you know, interventionists, people that are working with the kids? What does administration need? And then the second piece of that would be as a follow-up to the faculty meeting, then distribute that survey. So have the meeting kind of that reset, that reboot, start the process, and then start obtaining feedback from our stakeholders so that we can start developing comprehensive plans that incorporate everyone. So just as a recap, we wanted to take an honest look at where we are with our MTSS implementation. We want to ensure that we're implementing, focusing on the whole child with equity, inclusivity, and access. And we have already started these things. But one of the, one of the authors that I, I really loved this quote was that, "It's not enough to commit to doing the right work, we must do the right work right, and ensure that we're implementing our processes and procedures with fidelity so that we truly can see the benefits in increasing student outcomes." So thank you very much for your time. Are there any questions? Did I, I probably went over, Brian, didn't I? Too long?
It was wonderful. It was certainly worthwhile, all the time it took for you to share the information. So thank you very much. I'm sure we maybe have a question or two out there.
Thank you.
Yes, a lot of very good research with that. And I guess where do you start? I mean, you got 11 goals really that you're gonna do, and do you do a couple? You prioritize a couple, do they all open consecutively? So what are your thoughts?
So, so I think if, if I were, if I were developing the plan on how this would all roll out, there are certain things that I would want to do simultaneously. The first couple things I would say first is having, developing an MTSS implementation team at the district level so that we really can start the work and develop that implementation plan and figure out where we want to go, where we need to go, identify those gaps. At the same time, I think it would be important to have that reboot and start getting the surveys out to the faculty and staff because I think their feedback is going to be critically important to developing that full implementation plan. We definitely don't want to do that without them. So if, I think those would be the, the two, those would be the two places I would start. And then I think everything else would filter from there. So once we have the implementation team, then we can start working on the handbook, start working with the stakeholders in every building, the buildings can start working on their implementation and have it flow from there.
Okay. Would you anticipate this be multi-school year thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I, to do it right, it's going to take time.
Okay.
You know, one of, one of the areas that, that I did focus on as, as part of my dissertation was implementation science and how you can effectively implement any change within a school or within a district. And, you know, to get to full implementation, they say 50% of the stakeholders are implementing with fidelity. Could take two to three years for that, to get to that scope. But I think right now, laying the basis for the foundation of what this really is and developing that common language is going to be half the battle because everybody in every building is talking about different things, but they're talking about the same thing. So I think that developing that basis and starting some professional development and getting that common language built will help us. We do already have some of a foundation built with what we've got for, for our academic supports. We just need to, to space it out from there, but it's probably going to be a couple of years for full implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just note that, you know, it fits into our district goal of MTSS, which, which is a three-year goal. And this year, year one was really kind of identifying where we're at, some gaps, get some things in place. So, yeah, I would, I would agree with Dana, anticipate, you know, three, three years. Take a look at it every year to see if, you know, we need to extend it or make some tweaks here and there.
Okay, thank you.
You did mention that there might be some software available to assist with this. Could you just describe, like, what it would allow you to do? And is it, you know, 175,000, is it 25? Like, where's the gap in price range?
So I will say honestly that I haven't, I didn't look that far into, I have contacts for people that can do demos.
Yeah.
But I, I really wasn't sure which direction we were going to want to go in. I do know that there are, a lot of schools use Panorama and branching minds. There is a, there is a program which I also, which I have information for the, for a demo for something called Linkit, which is ED Law 2D compliant. I can check that first. So there are programs out there. I, I just hadn't, I hadn't gotten to the point where I was getting that deep into the details. But I think that would be something that we'd have to look at to see if it would even meet our needs and, and what we'd want to do.
Right.
Thank you.
Just great job about just the really extensive audit and, and clear explanation, so really appreciate that. For the last point, the extending the audit, would you consider, and makes so much sense to be involving folks who are on the ground with, with students, would you consider it involving families at any point in that external, you know, as you're widening that?
I, I think we would. I think it would, that would, that would need to be framed a little bit, a little bit differently. Probably not so MTSS-specific, but more about what supports do you see needed, you know, that we need? What could, what can we provide as a district to better support your child? So I, I, I think it's always, it's always extremely beneficial to have the input from the people it's going to impact. And the parents, what do you want your role to be? What should the student's role be? I mean, I have my idea of what those roles should be as a, as a, as an employee of the school district and as a parent and, but everybody doesn't necessarily always think and feel the same. So I think extending that, if that's something that we want to do, would be fantastic. And I would like to have feedback from the students too on, you know, what, what works for them, and I think that's important. Thank you for that.
I have a couple of questions about the differentiation.
Mm-hmm.
I know you mentioned between elementary and secondary. Is there also value within the secondary realm for middle school versus high school?
Absolutely. And, you know, I think when you get into secondary, it's, it's a different animal altogether. But even at the, at the middle school, we have grade-level teams. So we have these teams that are already developed, we have teachers that are coming together that, that a little bit more seamlessly can follow these processes and procedures because that structure is already in place that we can build off of. But at the high school, it definitely is more challenging because there's more students, the organizational structure is different, their schedules are all different. All ninth graders don't have the same classes, they don't have the same teachers, there's so much more flexibility. So that's, that's where those processes and procedures at the high school need to be very defined as far as who's going to be involved and how we're going to implement it because there's a lot, there's a lot more room for extreme variation or kind of like the wheels to fall off the bus, so to speak. So I think that's where those guidelines need to be very, need to be very clear, but there's definitely a difference.
Okay. And I had a reaction, a thought that, that, that differentiation would inform, I think, many of the other goals as well, in terms of how they're approached. And there needs to be some sort of reckoning of what our sort of overall district, regardless of grade level.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this is the, the process, the procedure, the structure. And then at the various levels, now it sounds like three, we have what is specific to those.
Correct.
And I think potentially that could be a very positive definition categorization as you go out to the stakeholders, to talk to them, to say, you know, we're looking at things specifically for your world.
Mm-hmm.
But this was great, and we look forward to updates. And I also want everyone, of course, to realize that, that Dana's role here was as the auditor and the recommendation. And our superintendent will carry us forward in terms of what the, what the implementation and rollout is with that information, although we absolutely value your continued contributions
Of course.
to the process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Committee reports. I know we have two, why don't we start with policy?
So, new this evening, I've been elected chairperson, so I'll be reporting out on the policy committee. We met this evening, and over the summer, there was an audit of the Health and Wellness Board policies, and it was completed. It was performed by our district health leader, who cross-referenced several policies with New York State guidance documents, including the New York State Education Guidelines for Medication Management in Schools. So there were three policies that we discussed. Number 7513, Administration of Medication. With three recommendations, there will be updates to the dates to reflect the school year instead of the calendar year. Update the language of EpiPen in the document to its medical name. And inserting guidance on insect repellent use in that policy. For policy number 7521, students with life-threatening health conditions, there are some updates to the language. And also specify language to include only nursing staff for consistency and training purposes. And then for policy number 7212, that Dana just went over for us, will be reviewed in January after reviewing exemplars. There'll be recommendations for review at the March meeting. So we will be reviewing that. And I forgot for the first two, sorry, going back, I forgot to specify the dates. But we will make available these policies at our next board meeting for a 28-day read, and then plan to vote on them on December, on our first December meeting. And our next committee meeting will be in January 17th. Any questions?
Thank you. Our audit committee?
Yes, thank you, Jason. Audit committee met. We approved the meeting minutes from the October 4th meeting in 2023. We, at that time, we had distributed the committee charter and purchasing policy that was reviewed, and there was no recommendations that the, that the audit committee recommends to the board. And we also reviewed an OSC audit of another school district for best practices. And, you know, taking some debt under advisement for, for some changes, so. And we do not have a date set for our next audit meeting, but we do plan to have at least two more this school year. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is correspondence, correspondence to the district.
We had 11 total this, this period. We had eight emails, two regarding transportation, two regarding student matter, one regarding meeting minutes. two regarding student matter, one regarding meeting minutes, and three regarding the soccer game start time. We had three phone calls included in that. One regarding transportation, one regarding a student matter, and one regarding a soccer game start time.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, the boards received two emails. One email regarding a student matter, one email regarding the community eligibility provision program. Announcements. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. The, just a couple of quick things. The, I don't think the students mentioned on Friday, they get the day off. There's no school for the students on Fridays. That's our superintendent's conference day. The staff will be busy with professional development opportunities throughout the district. So a big day for the staff and the students get the day off and then they can come back for some of the fun homecoming events later in the day. Milton Terrace is having their Harvest Festival on Saturday morning, so that's coming up at ten o'clock on Saturday morning. And the students do have their homecoming dance Saturday night. I can't remember if they mentioned it or not, but that'll be the conclusion of the homecoming spirit week here in the district. On Sunday, there's a rededication of the Village War with Mexico monument in the cemetery across from the middle school. They are going to have a parade from the middle school parking lot over into the cemetery to where the monument is. We had three of our middle school students involved with that, having their essays accepted as the top essays as part of that ceremony. So they're invited to be there with their families as well. Next week, we have the second of our Parents as Partners webinar series going on. So that information went out to all families today as well as all staff and the information's on the front of the website. Next week's program is focusing on special education. And then next Wednesday is the Boston Spa Community Band's Halloween concert. It's always a good one because it involves the adults from our community, but also we have alumni involved on that, we have staff involved on that, our current students involved on that, especially for the Halloween concert. So that's at seven o'clock at the Wood Road Cafeteria on the twenty-fifth. And your next meeting is November first. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I urge everyone to attend the community band concert. I know that there's, I think, at least forty-plus students who are going to be involved in it. And there's a lot of fun with costumes for both the adults and the students. And it is, it's just a great event.
Actually, along those lines, seems like the furniture gets put away at the evening after school. And so usually there's a lot of families there. So if we could just make a note that maybe we should have additional seating available for community members, that would be really helpful. Because there's a lot of parents who wind up just pulling it out themselves. And I think this district would prefer that their trained staff do it.
Any other announcements? Okay. Old business. I believe we have something. Mr. Ryan?
Yes, Jason, thank you. Bring up the topic from the last meeting regarding the NISBA legislative advocacy. I attended the NISBA annual business meeting, was this past Monday, October sixteenth, as an observer, not, not a voting member. The meeting started at four PM and ended at eleven fifty-one PM, just short of eight hours, with no break in the action. I'm not going to summarize everything that happened, so I will keep this as brief as possible. But I do want to highlight some points for our advocacy for this, for this year, right? It was stated that there was a record number of resolutions being considered for this meeting. And NISBA released the following, communication the following day. So they said, and I quote, "Yesterday delegates participating in the twenty-twenty-three annual business meeting engaged in a robust debate on a number of important issues. Nearly three hundred and seventy-five delegates considered all fifty-six resolutions that were proposed by the initial July submission deadline. Thirty-two were recommended by the resolutions committee, twenty-four were not recommended, and of those thirty-five were adopted." I do have some additional information to share, you know, regarding these details in a second. First, I would like to commend NISBA that, and the parliamentarian, did conduct the, the meeting, trying to get through business as best they could with, with what was at hand. Several times, they highlighted that this is democracy in action and that he wanted everyone to be heard. They also highlighted that the purpose of the resolutions was to set policy agenda for NISBA and not crafting legislative language. I observed this was a sticking point for some delegates as they got lost in the language that was in front of them and really kind of lost the intent of the policy statement and a lot of times debating over words versus really the intent. At the start of the meeting, it said that there were three hundred and two delegates logged on and there were two hundred was, was the quorum. This differs from the three seventy-five that was announced from the email, but perhaps that was what was signed up for the meeting versus what was logged on. But I did want to note that discrepancy. The main theme that was reiterated by many of the delegates was to have resolutions that maintain local control of school boards and no mandates. Just briefly, resolutions one through thirty-two were recommended by the resolutions committee. The first fourteen were sunsetting, having been on their policy agenda for the last five years. Statistical summary of the fifty-six resolutions, one through thirty-two, which was recommended by the committee, twenty-nine of the thirty-two were approved, with a majority of the approval being ninety percent of the voting delegates. The other thirty-three to fifty-six, six of those twenty-four were approved, and the approval percentages ranged from fifty-one to eighty-one percent. So this will be important in a, in a second. I do want to provide a summary of a few resolutions that were of interest, particularly at public comment last meeting. The electric bus mandate were really resolutions nineteen relating to a feasibility study, thirty-five, which is a waiver for small and rural districts that they don't have to buy electric buses because of the nature of their, their size. And thirty-six, which was basically advocate full repeal, no, no mandate for electric buses. So the feasibility study was, made, one delegate made a very good point that this was really a political football that was pushed through at the time. And the study will actually kind of allow lawmakers to save face a little bit, to say, okay, maybe we, we pushed a little too far and we need to kind of pull it back a little bit. Thought that was a good comment. And by the way, the resolution nineteen passed with ninety percent approval. Thirty-five for the small districts passed with sixty-two percent approval. And the ones that were no were basically districts that says, well, we want everybody to have a waiver, kind of. And then for the repeal, it was eighty-one percent that were in favor of advocating for a full repeal on resolution thirty-six. The interesting point is fifty delegates said no, but they didn't make any comments as to why they thought it was a good, good to keep the, good to keep it. So just something I had observed. Resolution twenty, something that we may want to consider just to have an opinion, was to support the elimination of Regents exams. Once again, this topic's above, above my head. We would obviously engage with the district to get their opinion as to what is appropriate for that, but that failed with fifty, fifty-three percent opposing, advocating for eliminating Regents exams. So very close vote on that one. And then, Tim, you're gonna, want to hear this one. Resolution thirty was fully funding free meals for all students. Passed with seventy-seven percent approval, which is good. But I was actually surprised it wasn't higher. They would have, I thought it would have been more unanimous. But some people argued the point that children who have the need are already getting that benefit and it's just moving tax dollars around for, for everything else. So I do want to make a note that at this point, resolution thirty, it was eight oh nine PM, four hours into the meeting. And at that point, I started keeping a little bit more track of the, the yes, no votes number-wise. So I'm going to give you a little, little quick timeline here. After resolution, at resolution thirty-four, and just as an example, it passed with the fifty-three percent. It was for a proposal to make kindergarten mandatory. It was one forty-five yes, one thirty-one no, which is a total of two seventy-six. So down from the three hundred and two delegates that started the meeting, and that'll be important in a moment here. So, resolution forty-two, two hundred and sixty-five delegates remaining. Resolution fifty-two, two hundred and sixteen delegates remaining. This is eleven seventeen PM. Parliamentarian basically pleading for people to stay online so that we don't lose a quorum. Fifty, resolution fifty-four, two hundred and six delegates remaining, eleven thirty-seven PM. Resolution fifty-six, two hundred delegates, right on the quorum, remaining, eleven forty-five. Votes were cast for that. But the late, proposed late resolution by Saratoga Springs District did not go through because someone logged off one hundred and ninety-nine delegates and they lost the quorum, right? So think of, and I don't know if the, if the Saratoga Springs delegate was on the line, they didn't comment at any time on screen or anything else. So I, I didn't recognize other local districts throughout the night. But can you imagine them being on, ready to do it, almost eight hours into it, and it stops? And the reason why I bring that timeline in is around nine thirty, people started using the, the calling the question, which is basically saying, we're stopping debate, we're going right to vote, pretty much just by the luck of who, who was chosen to, to speak first, just to move the process along, which is now limiting debate on really the, the slate of resolutions that are going to have the most debate and the, and the most discussion for, for approval. And I guess this had happened in the previous year's business meeting where the resolutions committee approved, resolutions go first, the non-approved ones go second, get pushed to the end of the meeting where people are jumping off and doesn't get the same, I think, the same review that it should. So one recommendation would certainly be for next year to maybe have NISBA flip that. Let's do the non-recommended ones first, the recommended ones second since they pretty much are, are kind of almost, go through with very little additional discussion. So I have other comments and such. I will save those for advocacy committee over the year. But just wanted to give an update, what was going on with that. And, you know, I feel your pain, Saratoga Springs delegate, if you're out there. I was there with you. I wish I could help you. But any questions or comments from the board for what I endured?
No, I'm just commending you for making it through that.
Well, at some point, you got to follow it through, right? So I, I was walking around the house with my headphones on so my family could, did not have to hear all the chatter. And they went to bed long before I did, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Very informative.
Thanks.
We're on to new business. May have a motion to approve resolution number two thirty-six, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, fiscal year independent audit report.
So moved.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two thirty-six passes. May have a motion to approve resolution number two thirty-seven, appointment, deputy purchasing agent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two thirty-seven passes. May have a motion to approve resolution number two thirty-eight, agreement, professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two thirty-eight passes. May have a motion to approve resolution number two thirty-nine, agreement, professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two thirty-nine passes. May have a motion to approve resolution number two forty, award of bid, toner.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two forty passes. Have a motion to approve resolution number two forty-one, field trip, eighth grade.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two forty-one passes. And I'd like to thank all those involved with organizing and all of the volunteers and parent and caregiver volunteers who will be part of making that a success. May have a motion to approve resolution number two forty-two, placement of students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two forty-two passes. May have a motion to approve resolution number two forty-three, placement of preschool students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolutions number two forty-three passes. May have a motion to approve, excuse me, resolutions number two forty-four through two fifty-six are recognized as a consent agenda for the purpose of the Board of Education Action. May have a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolutions number two forty-four. Okay. So we have a change to the consent agenda. Resolution number two forty-four is going to be removed? Do we need to recognize or have a resolution that the consent agenda now just consists of two forty-five? Okay. Kind of a motion to table resolution number two forty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number two forty-four is tabled. So now resolutions number two forty-five through two fifty-six are going to be recognized as the consent agenda for the purpose of Board of Education Action. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolutions number two forty-five through two fifty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda, resolutions two forty-five through two fifty-six passes. Do you have any other new business from the district? Do we have anyone here representing from our associations? Okay. PTA, PTSA update?
Ah, yes. So Milton Terrace had a recent meeting where Dr. Duka talked about district goals and community engagement. Their trunk or treat event is this Saturday from eleven AM to one PM. If it happens to rain, it'll be moved into the cafeteria. They're also hosting a turkey shoot on Friday, November third, from five thirty PM to eight thirty in Milton Terrace Gem. Goring Creek is having their trunk or treat event on October twenty-eighth, RSVP by Friday. They're also in need of a couple more volunteers for the event. Malta Ave is hosting their book fair this week and up until tomorrow. Earlier tonight, they had family night where caregivers and, and kids were able to drop by. Wood Road is having their book fair next week. They are still in need of volunteers for that event. Also, I'm referring to Also, I'm referring to a little flyer I found on Facebook, they are hosting a drawing contest. According to the flyer, draw, paint, or color your own idea of what Wood Road School and the four Bs mean to you. Winner will be chosen November first and will have their drawing made into a banner to be displayed outside of the front of the school. Contest is open to all students, grades K through five. Entries are due by Friday, October twenty-seventh, to the main office and make sure to submit your entry on an eight by, eight point five by eleven piece of paper, so regular paper. And also, Middle School is having their book fair next week as well, they're still in need of volunteers, including except for Friday around two forty-five PM. And that concludes PTA reports.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Ryan?
One more update for the, the no school participation needs this ceremony in the cemetery on Sunday, because you stay.
So just a quick announcement with that ceremony on Sunday, anybody who does attend, there'll be a sheet there for you to sign in, your name on that sheet will go in the time capsule, it will be exhumed or, or excavated in seventy-five years to be read out aloud again, so just a little interesting tidbit if you show up. And as any good parent, I do like to embarrass my children at times and my daughter will be speaking there, so the more they show up to witness that event would, would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
I have an update for BACC. The board may remember Director Conley Russo gave a presentation last May, so just some updates to that. At Wood Road site is up and running with licensed capacity for sixty students and they're hovering around thirty right now and look to expand that as they hire more staff. Gordon Creek has seventy students enrolled in before and after care and then the main center has a hundred elementary, middle schools students and twenty-five universal pre-K students. The universal pre-K is full with sixty-six full-day seats and BACC is beginning stages to work, collaborated with the middle school for a pilot grade six through eight student drop-in program, more to come on that in November. They hosted a free costume closet this past Monday for students and children to come and look at, at what they had available for the upcoming Halloween festivities. And they're partnering with Durst Designs to sell some BACC gear through November second with the, the goal of providing three hundred meals to students based on the sales. And last, they're looking to pilot a, a club called Cosmo geared for children of single parents only and really the eleven to fifteen age group and just having activities and, as well as educational and, and other support type of services, so. You know, the best way the district can, can help BACC is just, you know, obviously keep promoting their programs and students to the, to the community and the families and we appreciate, you know, their partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all our updates regarding that. We are now at the time, second period for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? We do not. All right. Our next meeting is on November first, did we say that? Yep, Wednesday, November first, and we do have reason to go into executive session tonight. We will not be returning to open session afterwards. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?